Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before we met to in this meeting at four o'clock, the board met with candidates for our new revised pension board. And I guess at this point, I think it's appropriate that we entertain any motion for appointments in that.
Yes, I would like to make the appointment of Nancy Wash, Greg Schuster, Joe Delacat, Colleen Mullen, and Ed Denton to the Pension Committee.
Is there a second or a second to those names?
A second.
Any discussion of any of these individuals?
All excellent candidates. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion for the five candidates named?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And I have a second appointment of Mike Polowski and Kevin Harrigan to the Ways and Means Committee. So that will take us from five to the seven.
Okay. Is there a second to Mike and Kevin?
Second.
Any questions or considerations other than those two individuals? Are questions about these guys? All in favor?
Aye.
If you can.
Hi.
We have a presentation from Park and Rec Comprehensive Plan Update. Ms. Judy Stern-Goldstein.
Hello, thanks for having us tonight. I'm here along with Karen Sweeney and Patrick Graham. Karen being your Park and Rec Director and Patrick is a CPRP. Patrick is a CPRP, a Certified Park and Recreation Professional, and he is the Program Director at Middletown Township. Together, Patrick and I would be doing an update to your joint Park and Recreation Open Space Plan. It was joint in 2007. I know Barbara was on the committee, I'm not sure if anyone else remembers it, but it was a very long process. It was the township and the borough together. And this has served sort of as the bible of park improvements and enhancements and capital purchases since 2007, when it was done. We're due for an update. Karen applied to DCR for a grant and was awarded a $20,000 grant, $10,000 with a $10,000 match from the township. She solicited proposals from me and Patrick together to do the work. Mine is a $16,000 amount, Patrick's is $4,000, so that comes into the 20, which matches the grant. We would be doing an update. With that, we would also need to have a committee to work with. Prior, the Joint Park Recreation Open Space Plan in 2007 had a huge, huge cast of characters in that committee. I think it was like 21 people. We're asking for five to seven people. You have a... I defer to Karen.
You know you can't talk unless you're up at the front.
Karen will join me shortly.
Otherwise, Ed will come out and...
I mean, I could give an answer, but it's not going to be the right one, so.
Yes, as identified, we would bring those names to you to try to fill those spots for the reason they're on the list to begin with. So to marry the interest and the reach and the resources.
Okay.
Just had a question. If you look at the selection of these people and you look at the demographics, do these members cover representation from the demographics of the...
The original list did, and we were trying to fit age, interests, activities, gender.
And cross-reference.
Yeah.
The ability to think globally, to look beyond their own demographic and self-interest and have been involved, that most of them at some level with the township has familiarity.
And actively involved in other boards and commissions for most of them also. And we're also looking for a student member.
Right.
Okay.
A student member, high school, college, university?
Minimum high school, college would be fine. Or the young adult position.
All right. Do you need anything from us?
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions. You listed under the project, the six steps or six output that you have, and I look at number four, meetings with public and key person interviews and with stakeholders. When you form your committee, I mean, I don't know if that you're going to reach out to groups of 20 or a group of two. I mean, when you say we're going to reach out to the public, what does that mean?
There will be four public meetings that were included in our proposal. We're anticipating three of them to be committee meetings that will be open to the public, and the fourth one will be the public meeting before the Board of Supervisors for the adoption of the plan. And then interviews with key person stakeholders would be those identified by Karen as the Park and Rec Director. We would interview them all in one day here at the township.
Okay. In the title, it talks Park Recreation and Open Space Update. Is there part of this to look at how to use open space or just that it's part of your inventory of open space? What part of the open space are you going to do?
It's the inventorying, inventorying, and noting the use that's been designated when the open space was acquired.
Okay.
It's an update of the original plan, which is the Park and Rec...
Yeah, I didn't know if they were going to try to come up with other uses for it, that's all.
That could be.
Yeah, could be.
If I need to read this plan, Mr. Snyder, open space is the umbrella term that we use. Different levels of park uses and sizes have definition derived by the National Recreation and Park Association. So originally, we moved forward looking at open space as the umbrella. And there's active, passive, all that falls underneath it. So it's identifying it, which then you won't see specific recommendations for this use or that use usually, but you'll see those definitions and those explanations that would help guide decisions as to what can and should be done in different areas.
Good.
Well, I'm glad to see that this is being done, updated. You know that a lot of our grants rely upon, or grant applications rely upon, an active and updated plan such as this, Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Doylestown Township has been very, very successful in pursuing and actively pursuing grants. And I know, I could think of at least six that came from projects that were noted in the 2007 plan.
Excellent. Okay, what do you need from us?
We would need approval for the consultants to do the work for the Park Recreation Open Space Plan and approval for the creation of the committee.
Be two different motions, I think.
Yep. Okay, is there a motion to approve the acquisition of the gentleman sitting here, the planning consultant, to proceed with the plan?
I'll move.
I think it's Patrick and Judy we have to approve.
Yes, both.
The group, yeah, those two consultants.
You are required, it's always recommended with any comprehensive plan, but you're required through DCR grant to have an active CPRP, which is Certified Recreation and Park Professional, as part of the consultant team. It is ill-advised, and actually, DCR would not approve an in-house person to do that.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And the budding committee is, you know, as detailed by Mrs. Stern-Goldstein, Robert Salneck, William Wirt, Ann Woodbear, Kathy Brown, and Ed McComas, with two other individuals to be sought, including one stupid member, and they will come back when those other two individuals are located and identified. Is there a motion to accept those individuals as the beginning members of the committee?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
One other thing that we do need...
Can we call this one first?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now what?
Supervisor liaison to sit as part of the Board of Supervisors.
Recommend that be the Park and Rec Liaison?
Traditionally, we recommend the Park and Recreation Board Liaison. It does not have to be, but that's usually how it falls.
Okay. Is said person willing to serve?
Absolutely.
All right, then we don't need a motion on that. We'll just move you along in that position.
Thank you for letting us have a committee to plan, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, any visitors or public comment tonight? None, hearing none, moving on. Announcements, these are big announcements. So we're next meeting at seven o'clock on June 5th. We're going to be closed on May 15th for Primary Election Day and May 28th for Memorial Day. Our next Budget Work Session is June 19th at 3:00 here, everyone's welcome. Such a Truck is this Saturday, this May 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a free event. It's open to everybody, you don't have to be five, you can come and have a good time. And we're dressing our floats, 9:00 a.m. this Saturday. Ann Woodbear is in charge, we're going to be designing the Memorial Day float for the Doylestown Bicentennial. We're starting this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., somewhere here, just come. The red building, I think, down by where the public works guys are. That's going to go on from 9:00 to 12:00, everyone is welcome. Home Run Derby is May 17th, the baseball field, you have to pre-register, but it is a free event. You check in at 4:30, the Derby starts at 5:00 and ends at 7:00. The Thompson Performing Arts Series kicks off with Finding Dory, it's a free movie. And everything's going to be held at Covenant Bank Amphitheater. There's going to be a whole series of performances, concerts, movies through to October of 2018. Doylestown Township Annual Golf Outing is June 4th, it is a fun event. You start eating in the morning, and then you eat in the afternoon. And somewhere around the course, there's a beer truck, and there's also hot dogs on the third fairway. There's prizes for everybody, it's a scramble, it's a lot of fun, so please, 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 please wait with us. And all proceeds go to our township park system, so it's a fundraiser for our parks. Create a New Flag for Doylestown Township Contest. And if you didn't see it, there's an article in this issue of the Herald on the expanded contest for Create a New Flag for Doylestown Township. It's part of our bicentennial celebration. It carries with it a $1,000 prize for the selected flag.
Before we move on, do you want to talk about the EAC Garden Party?
Oh yeah, it's not on here, is it? The EAC Garden Party is coming out.
Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00. In the native plant garden area and the backside of Central Park. Invitations were sent, public is welcome as well. And the garden looks great, and there's going to be some jazz music and food. And we would encourage everyone to attend.
So that's 3:00 to 5:00 this Sunday. Wear a nice hat, you're supposed to do that if you're wear hats. If not, just pretend you do and bring one along. But it'll be a lot of fun, and I know the Environmental Advisory Council's been working really hard on it. It should be a good time. And again, it's part of our bicentennial celebration. Where was I?
Minutes.
Minutes, all right. You've all received your minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the April 17, 2018 regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors?
Move to approve.
Any questions, changes, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention, thank you. And then there is minutes for our April 17, 2018 Budget Work Session. It was held at 3:00 on that day. Everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve notes?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention, very good. All right, SEPTA is going to close the road on July 19th through the 13th.
Yes, they are. We've received notice from SEPTA that they're going to be doing work on the tracks to make it safer and improve it like they do periodically. And that will close Monday, July 9th through Friday, July 13th. There will be a detour plan that our traffic engineer has looked at and our police department and everybody, and we will be sending confirmation after tonight's meeting back to SEPTA indicating that we can move forward with their improvements to the tracks and everything. But I wanted to bring it to your attention, of course, we will, as we get closer, post all of this information on our website, social media, et cetera, and alert the public as well. There will be signs ahead of schedule, as it indicates in the letter, about a week, week and a half prior. So if anyone has any questions, I know some of the detour, they have some of the names of the streets wrong, but...
Where will the first detour, I mean, where will the first closure be?
Well, at New Britain Road, you'll have to either go right or left. When you come up Lower State, instead of going over the tracks, you would have to go right or left on New Britain Road. And then coming down, it'll be closed basically just past Wisteria, so you'll have to make a decision probably by Memorial Drive, because they'll send you down and around from Butler Avenue now, State Street, Business 202, and rerouting you along 611 as well.
Okay, from Monday, July 9th to Friday, July 13th. All in one year, that's remarkable.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that mean the trail gets closed as well?
I don't believe so, I think it's at the intersection. No, the trail is officially open. It is open and it is being used.
Not the one by this way, was it ever open?
Yeah, it's open.
Oh yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Signs are down?
Signs are down, yep.
People are on it, trails are going to be closed, it's just the automobiles.
That section right there was already improved and everything. So it's really just at the intersection itself where the cars go over.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have to do anything with this because we have no charge over SEPTA.
Correct.
We just took notice and we're sending everybody else notice. All right, Solicitor.
The first item is fireworks. And the reason why it comes to your attention is that for years and years and years and years, Pennsylvania did not permit the sale of fireworks unless you were out of state. So you saw a lot of fireworks businesses near bridges and the like. Well, the statutes changed, now fireworks can be sold to Commonwealth residents. Just like you've seen with around the Super Bowl, pop-up tents occur, and all of a sudden, people are selling fireworks and tents and all that sort of thing. So there's a model ordinance that, believe it or not, was authored in part by the fireworks association folks who have to adhere to certain standards. And they have circulated because, I guess, assuming they don't like the idea of people with pop-up tents, but also because the township not particularly interested in folks and aren't regulated in some fashion with licenses and criteria. So the purpose of today is to get an idea of what you want to do in response to that, whether it goes to the Planning Commission or what you want to do, or I just turn it as it is into a Doylestown Township ordinance. So that's really what the purpose of the discussion is tonight, today.
And I did review the ordinance with our code department, and they liked the idea that we would create a new ordinance regulating this, so.
Does the code want to do that, or does the code suggest we send it to planning or give it to...
It would come under code. Right now, it comes through the Fire Marshal's Office when someone wants to do the sale of fireworks and permitting for the, with they shoot off fireworks on the property and things like that. So I think it should sort of remain as standalone and be part of the general codes and be administered through our code department and our Fire Marshal's Office.
Well, I agree with that, but who wants to take a look at this ordinance as it stands?
I think we should work with Mr. Garten and Sinclair.
And not the Planning Commission, but Sinclair and Mr. Garten.
Yeah, and our Fire Marshal, Rick Shea.
Everyone agree on that?
Yes.
So we'll take it up, and when we have an ordinance, everybody's happy, we'll bring it back for authorization to advertise.
That's great.
Have it before July 4th?
God, I hope so.
A question in conjunction with that, especially with Rick Shea and all, is there any need to look at the appropriate usage in our current ordinance now that everybody's going to be having fireworks?
We could certainly do that, I mean...
Just saying, tie it, it's going to get together.
Yeah, I mean...
Have Rick Shea look...
Look at the usage, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good point.
That's it, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Second item, you'll recall that several meetings ago, you authorized me to appear at the zoning hearing board to object to an application where the owner proposed, or the equitable owner proposed to divide one lot into two separately non-conforming lots. His counsel sent me a sketch plan that he asked if it would change your position to the extent that the two lots now, one is conforming and one is now less conforming. And whether that changes your position or not, and I brought that to your attention, you've seen the plan, and your thoughts.
What does the zoning, what does the manager say?
Well, it still remains to, one conforming and one non-conforming lot. And we're taking an existing conforming lot and creating a non-conformity, which we tend to discourage, frown upon and discourage. So I would, my first recommendation to you would be to leave it as it is and continue to go to the zoning hearing board and oppose it and see if the zoning hearing board agrees with us, or if the other side can convince them otherwise.
The other observation is, one of the premises in the application for the request is that there are other multitude of lots that are already undersized. Well, if you look at a map, it's not that way. There's some, but most of the lots are conforming. So they've cherry picked a few places that have smaller lots. It arose from when, you know, that was originally developed many years ago, so before we even had zoning in the township. So I just need a reaffirmation of that's the position of the board.
Well, the reason why we have zoning is to protect neighbors and, you know...
Well, it's to have continuity in your...
All right, so is it the consensus of the board to continue to, you know, oppose this application? Yes, that's...
Yes.
Continue on there.
Thank you much. I'll be back for other things later.
Okay, Chief, do you have anything?
Yes, since the last board meeting, the chief of police is from the nine municipalities that cover the Central Bucks School District, met again with the Central Bucks School District and continued our discussions with school violence and how we're going to handle that. And that was a follow-up to, I guess, the managers and a supervisor from each municipality met a couple days before. So we continued that, we're meeting again on May 17th. In addition to that, on the 27th, I attended a meeting up the YMCA, and there's several emergency medical, emergency management teams there, and we reviewed their emergency action plan. So it's kind of steamrolling into a lot of different agencies. The 28th this past weekend, we participated in the 15th DEA Drug Take Pack. We had our one location, we normally have two, but this time we had one since the closing of Redners, and we hope to have a new partnership with the new giant. But we took back in 46 pounds of turned-in prescription drugs. It's not bad.
It's a lot of pills.
Yeah, I think county-wide, they took in almost 4,000 pounds. As far as personnel goes, our two newest hires are working and progressing well. And with that being said, I thought we'd be moving along smoothly with full personnel. I just found out last week that our Lieutenant O'Connor will be entering the drop program effective tonight. So he's got the next four years hopefully to move on. So we wish him well as he moves along, and we will try to progress and make sure that we're capable of filling his shoes upon his departure.
I think I'll apply.
What's that? She's going to move on.
I want to become the lieutenant of the police department.
Can't wait. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Chief, thanks. Township Engineer?
Yes, one thing this evening, as you recall, back in the beginning of March, the board approved the Central Bucks West Athletic Field renovation project. Earlier this morning, we held the pre-construction meeting for that project, and it was noted to me that they needed to remove 4,000 square yards of topsoil as part of the project, since they're putting in a synthetic field instead of a natural grass field. And the township's subdivision land development ordinance prohibits the removal of topsoil from the site unless approved by the Board of Supervisors, unless you...
Thank you.
And so they want to start on May 14th, so I said I would bring it up in front of the board, let them know they have graciously offered to give us as much topsoil as we want. And the township is going to be taking about 500 yards of it. So what we need tonight is basically a waiver of Section, Saldo Section 15329D2, which will allow the school district to take topsoil off their site.
Well, we certainly want to help the school district along with this project. Is there a motion to approve the request?
Move to approve the request to remove the soil.
Second, thank you. And you sure we're getting clean topsoil, not junky stuff?
Yeah.
Well, we'll look at it when they start to bring it up.
They want to bring a sift from home.
Yeah, there might be some baseballs in there, some hockey, because it is from the sports field.
Okay.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, there's a motion in a sec. And you probably got the correspondence in your email box today from the school board. Okay, school district, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks, Mario. Director of Operations, bid openings and recommendations.
I'm going to defer back to Mario regarding the 2018 road program.
Yes, the township received numerous inquiries and seven bids for the 2018 road program. The bids encompass a base bid, which was the estates of Doylestown, and four add alternate bids, one being Cedar Crest Farms, the three roads in Cedar Crest Farms, one at Shady Retreat Road, there was Upper State Road, and Duane Road. What we did is, we found that, we analyzed all the bids, we sort of backed into it. You had a budget of $625,000 to do the road program this year. With all the bids, or the base bid and all the add alternates, the low bidder was at $679,000. So we figured, well, let's see how we can get closer. So the first thing is, we took out Duane Road, which is the smallest road. It was the road that needed the least work, and the water authorities actually looking into extending water into that service, so that made it, so we took that one out. It got us down to roughly $639,000. So then we went to the next road, which was South Shady Retreat Road. There is a portion of that road, we go from Alms House to the SEPTA railroad crossing, then from the SEPTA railroad crossing to Butler Avenue. That second section is actually split with the borough, and the borough does have a development and a program in place for that intersection that's going to be upgraded. So we took that section of roadway out of the bid and got us down to $627,440.15. So it would be our, and I talked to the contractor, and they have no problem with us taking that, you know, Duane Road out and shortening up Shady Retreat. So it would be our recommendation that you award the contractor James D. Marcy in the amount of $627,440.15, contingent upon the contractor executing a change order as outlined in the bid package. Basically, it gets us down to the number we're looking for.
And we're not going to be assessed any penalty or fine for change order in this, right?
No.
Okay, good, just want to make sure. All right, so is there a motion to award this paving contract to Marcy in the amount $627,440.15?
Move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thanks, Mario, again.
Just, there was a question asked at TSAT, we are paving 4.52 miles of road.
Wow.
If you remember why that's important, how we were building up the plan to cover five miles, and here we're getting close to it with a lot less money.
One project.
But it's how they're arranging the projects too, closer proximity. So by looking at it differently, these guys are doing, having a really efficient way and getting our roads up speed.
Go team.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, thanks, Mario. Thanks, Director of Operations.
Mario did all the work.
Okay. You're all in it together. All right, Manager?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, Supervisors, Jen, you want to start?
Sure, a couple weeks ago, Rick Clow and Stephanie Mason and I met with a representative from PICO. We discussed with them the frequent power outages and the storms and how we managed communications regarding power outages, especially during these storm situations. It was a very productive meeting. We received a lot of background on why these things occur and are going to, we're going to continue speaking with them about communications with our residents.
Thank you. Anything else? Ken?
Just one thing, when we talked about the appointees for the Pension Committee, we also need a supervisor liaison to that committee. And I would suggest, I would, for the remainder of this year, until we appoint new ones for next year, I would be willing to take that on.
Excellent.
Unless there's someone else that...
Does anyone else want to go?
No, I think you can do it, definitely.
You stay on there, Ken. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Three gold stars for you, Ken. How about you, Reg, can I?
No, no, I'm glad to.
Glad you took that one off. Nothing else, that's it?
You don't have anything?
I thought we were approving or being happy with his liaison.
We are happy.
Of course, I have a couple.
Yeah, of course.
Planning Commission had a good meeting with the Toll Brothers and their attorney, and the Planning Commission and our attorney, Jeff, Judy... and the Planning Commission and our attorney, Jeff, Judy, who has left, and Stephanie and myself. And we put a lot of clarity into the, this is the Toll Brothers project, I'm sorry, down on.
Okay.
So we got a lot of clarity into what can happen there and how it can happen there as far as zoning, off-site contributions, et ceteras. So, I mean, I left that meeting very confident we resolved all the open issues, just a matter of now getting into the details and hopefully very soon, you know, we'll be seeing some progress on that Toll Brothers project. Second thing is, we received a thank you letter thanking Sergeant Ziegler. And as I always say, it's not easy for somebody to sit down and send an email or write a letter to the township thanking them for something.
Yep.
So when they take the extra effort, I mean, that really means a lot to me in our busy day, in our busy days. And just briefly, this gentleman got stuck in the second snowstorm. He works at the Doylestown Hospital and slid into a ditch. Well, if you've ever been out in a ditch on a main road, it's not a very comfortable situation. And he tried to call AAA and all that kind of stuff, but what happened shortly after Sergeant Ziegler showed up, stayed there, made sure he was safe and protected, not only him but his vehicle, and periodically went and checked to make sure everything was fine. And then to the point where when AAA wasn't, I guess with the snow, things were going a little bit slower and slower and slower. So after a couple of hours, Sergeant Ziegler took it upon himself to ask the driver if he wanted him to get a truck. And 20 minutes later, a tow truck pulled up, got him up and got him out of the way. And he's just thrilled and happy that the police force takes the extra effort and the township encourages that, that the police force does more than just, you know, have traffic stops and that kind of stuff. So I thought it was, congratulations to Sergeant Ziegler, as I'm sure the chief already has conveyed to him. The third thing, we had a DTMA meeting. You see the ordinance later tonight and Keith is here to answer all questions and every question. And briefly, this, the furlong road project is going swimmingly. It's basically done in the township and is going to go progress over into Buckingham. If anybody has any questions, Keith is anxious to answer them.
When you say done, you mean just the main?
The main, I'm sorry.
Good.
Did I do all right, Keith?
Yes.
All right, thanks. I'm done.
All right, excellent. I just have a few things.
Ryan?
I don't have anything. I'm sorry, Ryan.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, you sure?
I'm sure.
You know me, jumping the gun all the time.
You're excited, go ahead.
Doylestown Dart, it's becoming the Dart and they're expanding west up Business Route 202 to Chalfont, New Britain Borough, New Britain Township. So they're going to increase the ridership, as is there going to be water going in over there. So they're anticipating a whole lot of new clients, new customers. The ridership continues to grow and they think that with the business development over in that area of the community, Dart is going, Steph and I was to their last minute, last meeting, that that's going to be a good thing for not only the Dart but for the Central Bucks community in whole. So Dart, the newsletter, I don't know if you guys all had the chance to see our newsletter. I mean, this is an awesome piece of publication.
Yeah, it was great.
Especially with the bicentennial information inside. And we're following the timeline from 1818 and now we're up to, you know, almost present day. They have old years and new years and it's just a wonderful job that they're doing in-house on our bicentennial celebration and the history of this township for the last 200 years. Very proud of this publication. So thanks to the staff for their good work. The Herald has printed an article that was actually written by someone who just sent a letter in saying, "I can't believe you guys are doing a flag contest. I'm a vexicologist," that's a flag expert, "and I'd love to write about this and tell everybody that you're doing this." And so he wrote this nice story about Doylestown Township and the flag contest and it's expanded beyond Doylestown Township for submissions. Anyway, it got published in like this issue of the Herald, so that is appearing. And the other day, last Tuesday, I was privileged to attend the Rotary Breakfast on behalf of the township and the Environmental Advisory Council and the Bicentennial Committee, for which we received a check for $5,000 for.
Trees.
Oak trees, legacy oak trees that would be planted in Doylestown Township parks in honor of our bicentennial. So, that's all I got. I mean, I got more, wait, I got more. Oh, yes. The first thing under supervisors is that Joe Paternosta, who used to be Chair of the Bicentennial Committee, has sent in his letters of resignation and is, I'll entertain a motion to accept his resignation? Make them.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful service. And then we've done the pension committee appointments. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Giant Food Stores. We received a bunch of information in our packet about the application, transfer from somewhere in Richland Town, Richland Borough.
I'm right.
Eastburn LLC to Doylestown Township. Giant is taking over the old Redners and they would like a beer, wine, but consider it a liquor license transfer, correct?
Yes. On or about April 23, 2018, Giant Food Stores LLC filed an application with the township requesting that the Board of Supervisors approve an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license. Now, the date is April 23rd, but obviously the first advertisement occurred on April 15th. That's because we had a letter in advance that didn't have the complete application. So the application dates actually, after it was first advertised, we had all the German information beforehand and we had to make this meeting, so that's why we went ahead and advertised it. The license would be transferred from a location in Richland Town Borough to the Giant Supermarket to be located at 1661 Easton Road, being a portion of Bucks County Tax Parcel 9-14-30-2, which is the old Redner location. Notice of the hearing was advertised in the intelligence on April 15, again on April 22. The application as well as the proof of publication are incorporated into record by reference. I would note that the provisions of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control, Liquor Code at 47 Perdant Statute 416 permits an intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license within Bucks County. Provide the Board of Supervisor conduct a public hearing and determine that the transfer will not be detrimental to the welfare, health, peace and morals of Doylestown Township. First of all, I have to ask the question, does anyone here desire party status? Keith?
Nope.
Nope, nobody requests party status and I will then call upon Ellen Freeman, the counsel, to make her presentation.
You came in from Pittsburgh, did you?
I did.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. I lived in Philly not too long ago, so I just moved to Pittsburgh, so it's my first travel trip. But I'm happy to be here this afternoon. Thank you for giving us the time. I am Ellen Freeman. I am an attorney with Flaherty and O'Hara. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Giant Food Stores. I also have here with me this evening, or this afternoon, Colin Heap. He is the manager of special projects at Giant Food Stores. And a little later on in my presentation, I always have him come forward and I'll ask him a few questions about Giant Food Stores operations. That way he's up here if the board or any of the staff members have any questions at all, he can answer them if I'm not able to. And your solicitor covered while we're here this evening, Section 461 does mandate that a public hearing be held. And this is really in order to give a forum to the residents of the municipality to give their comments and recommendations to the board on Giant Food Stores' intentions to operate a liquor license within the municipality. This would be used at a new Giant Food Stores within the municipality in the old Redners building. And Giant Food Stores wishes to have a beer garden eatery in which they would allow for patrons to drink beer on premises with a limit, as well as sell beer and wine to go, which is their major business plan and the majority of their sales from the licensed premises is for takeout. And I know you're well aware that Pennsylvania has seen a surge in grocery stores obtaining liquor licenses. And I know a few years ago that the township also approved a transfer to Wise Market. So this would be very much the same sort of direction and process that Giant Food Stores would go through as well. Now, the reason we've seen an increase in grocery stores and their alcohol sales is due to a number of changes that went on with the liquor code. The Pennsylvania Legislature in 2016 enacted Act 39, which codified much of the language that the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board was already enforcing, but it wasn't necessarily written down in law. So this helped grocery stores to remodel a portion of their business in order to include the required seating and the required food items, which would allow them to be, allow them to obtain a restaurant liquor license, which is the only liquor license in Pennsylvania that grocery stores can obtain in order to sell beer and wine to go. So they do, Giant Food Stores does remodel their businesses in order to meet those requirements with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. They have been awarded 64 liquor licenses in Pennsylvania, so they have 64 open and operating beer garden eateries across Pennsylvania. Another thing that the Pennsylvania Legislature did was restate the purpose of the liquor code. And for the purposes of the public hearing this afternoon, I do just want to read one quick paragraph from the preamble of Act 39, as I think it's pertinent to the board's decision. It states as follows, "It is the purpose of this act to reform the system by which alcohol is dispensed and controlled, to reflect changes in the marketplace, in order to permit private industry to offer additional products for sale and provide for the operation of a retail system that promotes competition and convenience." And Giant Food Stores really is a prime example of the Pennsylvania Legislature's intentions to provide not only residents of the municipality but also out-of-towners that come in expecting to see alcohol products in the grocery stores. It provides them with a safe and convenient alternative to other places in the municipality. Now, as I mentioned, they currently have 64 stores that are open and operating with alcohol sales. They have started their alcohol sales in Pennsylvania in 2006. So now for their operation spanning nearly a decade, they still have not been cited by the Pennsylvania Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement for any violation of the liquor code whatsoever. So they have not been cited for any sales to minors, any sales of intoxicated persons or any violation that includes the sale of alcohol. And the reason that I hone in on Giant's record is because their record shows that they have an excellent reputation within the municipalities. They would not jeopardize this reputation that they've built up in each of these communities and hope to build up in Doylestown Township with handling alcohol in a haphazard manner. And the way that they're able to protect this record is through their strict policies and procedures that they put in place. They go well beyond what a restaurant liquor licensee is allowed to do. They put stricter policies and procedures in place and that way they're selling alcohol in a safe manner to the constituents where they operate. And I'll go through all of these as well. And that leads me into the operations for the restaurant that would be within Doylestown Township. I'm going to distribute floor plans and I'll, for the record, I'll label the first floor plan, Applicants Exhibit A1, which is an overview of the entire grocery store. You also see it up here in an enlarged poster board. The second floor plan, which we will label as Applicants Exhibit 2, is an enlarged aerial view of the proposed licensed premises, so you can see what would be included. I apologize, I only brought nine copies. I didn't expect this many people on the board, so I will have to ask somebody to share if you don't mind.
I'll share with Barbara.
Great, thank you.
We got copies in the email.
Yeah, we got them.
Thank you. Now, as you see, this remodeled portion would be in the front left of the grocery store.
And what is gray shaded on your floor plans, that's what would be considered licensed by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. So those are the only areas in which you'll see any type of alcohol product and that is the only area in which you can purchase alcohol products. There will also be a register that's located on that licensed premises. There will be signage that says beer and wine sales here. There will be seating for 32 patrons on the licensed premises. It's hard to tell on there, but it's actually booth seating, so it'll be up against the wall in order to utilize some of the window light. And then there will also be food options for patrons to either dine in at the seating that's provided, or they can also take away those food options and take it home with them. You're going to see things like sushi. There's going to be a soup bar, a salad bar. There will be a hot entree bar that has varying, various entrees. And the hours of operation, just specific to this licensed premises, the grocery store will likely have extended hours, but for the alcohol sales on the licensed premises, they're limited to Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Giant Food Stores is always in all of their operations fully Ramp certified. And if you're not responsible with Ramp, that's the Responsible Alcohol Management Program. It was developed by the Pennsylvania Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement. And this is a program that each and every associate that works in the licensed premises will have to go through and pass a test afterwards. It goes through any scenario you can think of with the sale of alcohol. So it will go through how to properly card an individual, how to use the card scanning device that's at the register, how to spot a fake ID, how to notice whether someone's visibly intoxicated and how to handle declining a sale to someone who's visibly intoxicated. So it really goes in-depth. And then in addition to that training, Giant Food Stores also trains each of their employees on their strict policies and procedures as it goes beyond what a typical licensee would go. Giant Food Stores has a 100% carding policy at all their stores, so they have one enforced here at this store as well. So no matter what your age, you will be carded if you wish to purchase alcohol at the Giant Food Stores. And in addition to that, as I mentioned, each register will also be equipped with a card scanning device that the license will be physically run through in order to spot a fraudulent ID and to make sure that that patron is actually of age to purchase alcohol. Beer sales, in the beer garden, there will be on-premises consumption of beer, as I mentioned. Giant Food Stores' policy is that there is a two-beer limit for on-premises consumption of beer products. And in addition to that policy, they also require that if a patron wishes to purchase alcohol and drink on-premises, they must have also ordered a meal items, one of the meal items that I spoke to prior, in order for someone to have a true restaurant experience and not just sit down and have a beverage. Now, in their operations at their other 64 locations, they've found that this is very limited. It has a lot to do with consumer lack of knowledge, not knowing that they can actually drink on-premises, as it doesn't look like a typical restaurant that you would see throughout the municipality. There's no waitstaff, so there's no one there to serve you the alcohol while you sit. There's no bar, there's no draft beer, no happy hour specials. So really, it's not conducive to someone sitting down and having more than two-beer limits. So Giant Food Stores has found that that policy is very easy to enforce, because if someone is sitting and drinking on-premises, that keys an associate in to making sure that they watch that individual and that they don't go over the two-beer limit. And in addition to the on-premises sale, they'll also be doing takeaway sales, which is the majority of their business in the licensed premises. So permitted by law, they are allowed to sell 192 fluid ounces of beer to go, which is roughly two six-packs, and up to 3,000 milliliters of wine to go, roughly four standard bottles of wine. And that's in a single transaction. The beer and wine purchases must be made at the licensed premises, as I mentioned. The beer and wine SKUs, each of the products have one, will not be able to scan at any of the other registers. So even if there was a self-checkout aisle, a patron's not going to be able to scan their product through and they'll be asked by an associate to go back and purchase it at the licensed premises. Again, signage will be up, hopefully to make it very clear to a consumer where they can purchase it. In the restaurants area, the beer garden area, there will be security cameras that cover the cash register that's there, as well as all of the product. And that will be, you know, monitored, as well as the restaurant associates and the manager that's on staff will also be physically monitoring the area while it's open. And at that point, I'm going to call Colin up and have him answer a few questions for me. Colin, will you just state your name and title for the record?
Yeah, Colin Heap, Manager of Special Projects for Giant Foods.
Great. And when do you anticipate the grocery store in general to be open, as well as when do you anticipate alcohol sales to be available pending approval this evening?
Yeah, so currently, the remodel project is scheduled to go until February of next year, so we would be looking for a grand opening in February and that would include the beer garden.
Great. And I mentioned that the beer garden would have limited hours. Is there a way of locking product up when the beer garden is not open for operation anymore, but the rest of the grocery store is still open?
Yeah, well, for each of the cold doors, for the cold product that we have, each of those doors is individually lockable, so they would all be locked at closing time each evening.
Great. And can you go into Giant's carding policy? I mentioned that it's 100% carding policy. Why is that?
Yeah, we really just want to simplify the process for the cashier and for any associate that'd be working in the beer garden, so that they're not making judgment calls as to who would be old enough and so forth. It's, we've found that that's the best way to ensure that we maintain that perfect record that you spoke about and it's served us very well. We've had, I would actually say very. We've had, I would actually say, very few issues or complaints about that policy. But we also use an electronic ID scanner, which allows us to validate, basically make sure that any ID that is used to purchase alcohol would be verified. So we don't really have issues with fake IDs and things like that either.
Okay, and lastly, why does Giant Food Stores need a liquor license for this store in general or for any of their stores?
Many of the reasons that you mentioned were the reasons that the state wanted to change the law in the first place, is to increase consumer variety and consumer convenience. And that's really what our customers have asked us for. We treat it as very similar to if we add a fuel station, or a pharmacy, or natural foods, other amenities within the store, which make it more convenient for our customers to get more done in the same shopping trip. And certainly, beer and wine is a natural complement to the food items that we already carry. So it's a very good fit for us, and it's been something that's been a real home run with our customers.
Great, thank you. Those are all the questions that I have for Mr. Heap. Any questions from the board?
Any questions from the board?
I have a couple, if you don't mind. In your intermunicipal transfer application, number 22, in conjunction with your applications with the LCB for transfer license, it's your intention also to Sunday sales, you said that, extended hours, yes. And you're also doing an amusement permit. Can you tell us what an amusement permit would encompass, or what that means?
Yes, an amusement permit is something that a licensee, we always recommend a licensee to get an amusement permit, mainly because it's a nominal cost, it's about $100 per year. And the LCB has the position that if someone were to even dance on the premises, and that would be caught by an LCE agent, they could get cited for having amusement without an amusement permit. So it's a very low threshold. And so, since it's a nominal cost, we always advise our clients to get an amusement permit on top of that.
Do you anticipate or foresee amusement or entertainment at this facility?
We typically have, about two weeks after we open, we'll have what we call beer celebration. And it's kind of a grand opening-type event. And we usually have somebody come in and play guitar, like acoustic guitar, and we'd have free food and samples and things like that.
With your two-beer limit?
Well, you know, we'll have a vendor, we'll have a wine vendor and a beer vendor come in and do samples in little tiny cups. And it's just basically that one evening, two hours for that one evening. Although, the entertainment, like, from time to time, we may have, like, the past two years, we've done an associate talent show, just as part of our associate recognition efforts. So there may be people performing in the store as part of the talent show, and we wouldn't want a licensed premises to be operating, and we're having a talent show, and somebody considers that to be entertainment.
Gotcha, okay. The other thing is, I just, I think this is true, but when you're drinking a beer in the beer garden, you cannot then walk around and go get your chicken from the cold station, right? You have to stay within the beer garden, drink your beer there.
Right.
You can't take an open container anywhere else outside, or anywhere else in the store, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, how do you monitor that?
Basically, through that associate that's stationed, that's what, part of the benefit of having a register within the licensed premises, is that associate is stationed at that register. So they are definitely on the lookout for anybody who would be consuming on-premises. And as Ellen mentioned, it's a very small portion of the business.
And your camera, that's real-time monitoring, or is that looping?
It is, yes. And we always have, if we don't already have camera coverage, like, right now, I have no idea what camera coverage they had in the Redners. But we will always make sure that there is a camera directly on the register and shooting into the beer garden itself.
Okay. And that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I just had one, just a question about taking samples or taking your beer somewhere else. So the bounder here, is that secured when you say, or is it, you're reliant on the associate monitoring?
Yes, that's a good point. We didn't mention the bollard system, so the PLCB requires us, as part of the license, to delineate the licensed area from the rest of the grocery store. There will be what they call interior connections between each of those points that you see on the map. So basically, we use a series of either permanent fixtures, like the salad bar is a permanent fixture, or a bollard, which is a four-foot-tall metal post that would delineate the perimeter of that licensed area. But there is, for customer convenience and traffic flow, there is no physical barrier between the licensed area and the grocery store, other than those bollards.
Or stacks and stacks of beer cans.
That's not permanent.
Yeah, that's not permanent.
They're not permanent, I know, but they seem to be permanent. Seem to be, anyway. Any other questions?
No, not from me.
No, not hearing any. Any questions from the...
The audience?
I prepared the appropriate resolution, and if the board's inclined to approve the transfer, the form of the resolution is consistent with the liquor control code. And again, as I mentioned previously, the only reason you can turn it down is if you feel this is contrary to the health and welfare of the township, and obviously, we've had no witnesses and no evidence to that effect. So if you're so inclined, it would be appropriate to approve the resolution, which approves the transfer from Richland Town Borough.
All right, just one question on the "whereas." The first line, Township of Doylestown, "Sales of liquor and malt or brewed beverages." Now, sales of liquor, that's because of one...
That's just referencing Act 141, and liquor...
We're not selling liquor.
No, you're not selling liquor.
We're not allowed to sell liquor.
Not selling liquor.
Well, let me just clarify.
Thank you. Sorry, you have to go back. We're live.
All right. So just as a clarification purpose, with a restaurant liquor license, which is what Giant Food Stores is obtaining, they would be permitted by law to sell spirits on premises. There's no takeout of spirits in Pennsylvania. They are permitted to sell liquor. They have no interest in doing that. Their other 64 operations do not allow for liquor on premises or wine on premises. I think maybe some of their locations allow for wine on premises, but at this premises, they only intend to sell beer for on-premises consumption, wine and beer to go, and that's all. But I did want to let you know that permitted by law, they are allowed to sell liquor.
Once you have a restaurant license, that expands it.
All right, but we're not selling liquor here, just beer and wine to go and beer on site.
Yes.
Just one other question. Well, mine isn't for you.
Okay.
Well, we have this capability at Wise's, we have it at Acme, and I recognize that you guys have a spotless record, but at those other two chiefs, maybe you might know, have we had any reported issues from any other places?
Very minor.
Very minor.
Acme's the borough, anyway.
Well, it's still the residents. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, I haven't seen or heard of it.
I haven't either, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
We have the usual shoplifters, but they're not shoplifting the beer and wine, they're shoplifting the beer.
The chicken, they're after the chicken.
The chicken. All right. So, what is the pleasure of the board? We want to contemplate, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Now, we also have 45 days if we want to think about it and bring it up at the next meeting, but it doesn't appear that we have any objections to this.
I would make the motion to approve now.
And I'll second that.
All right.
Yeah, I have no issues. Shane Redners is leaving, but I'm sure you'll fulfill the needs. In fact, I mean, just as a shout-out to Redners, for years, they were very helpful in us gathering thousands of pounds of canned goods for the local kitchens. Yeah, so, I mean, they were great, great community sponsors and contributors. I'm sure Giant will follow through too.
All right, thank you for that. I'll make anything, John. All right, I'm gonna call a question, all in favor of the motion to approve the transfer of this liquor license to the soon-to-be Giant? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, you're good. We'll sign this today, and you'll be good to go. Sign it right now. You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Saff Freeman, for coming to Doylestown to make this presentation. Appreciate you being here.
She wanted it to be a night meeting, though, when I spoke to her.
Did you?
Oh, this is wonderful, having a four-hour meeting.
And you're done by five? All right, good.
Back in five hours.
Good luck with your new place. We'll be sure to visit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, you can send him an invite to the opening of the beer garden.
Yeah, he'll probably come, so.
Not the smallest.
No, but we do have some singers on the board.
Okay.
There you go. All right. All right, going back to the agenda now, any, we have an ordinance for, we have another hearing on a mandatory hookup, public water for...
The board will recall that as part of the Furlong Water Project, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection required that the township adopt an ordinance requiring or mandating connections to the public water source. Based on the board's action to authorize the advertising of the ordinance, I did so. It appeared in the intelligentsia, let me get the right date here, hold on a moment.
April 23rd?
Appeared on April 23rd. And I also sent a copy to the Bucks County Law Library, so it's been duly advertised, and it's incumbent upon the board to conduct a public hearing and decide if you're going to comply with the requirements to get your grant. It's probably a little late not to, because they weren't starting the project.
All right. So, we all know what this is about, mandatory hookup where people need water, because they have foul water, and it's been polluted for many years. Bucks County Water, Dulston Township Water.
Dulston Township Municipal Authority and Buckingham Township.
And yes, thank you, I lost the acronym in my head. We'll be servicing the area, and Buckingham already has this in place.
Yes, they do.
They've already approved mandatory hookups for their residents, so here we are. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
There a second? Are any, no, yes, just a second?
That's a second, yeah.
Any comments, or anybody out there? Hearing none?
No, I have one.
We have comments.
I have a comment. And it's more around how this information and how we communicate it to the residents. How do they know, just as an example, where we say, "Within 90 days, you have to hook up."
Right, right.
So it says, "Upon written notice."
Right.
Or days of written notice. When does that start?
So, what I think we want to do is, after the passage of the resolution, is coordinate with Buckingham to make sure that the construction practices, aka having water to supply them, is complete. Once we have that water ready to serve them, we will give them 90 days to connect to public water.
My question was more, how do we communicate? How do they, when will they learn of that?
I personally have been probably out at the, all 11 of our properties, at least once a week. So they all are well aware of that.
Okay.
But we'll follow up with something in writing, as far as explaining what, you know, the connection, what the ordinance was just passed.
Yeah, it's more like a Cliff Note of this, so they know exactly what's going to happen.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And they've all been aware of it, at least everybody that I've spoken to.
Okay, good.
And we're on schedule, Keith?
Yeah, just a real quick update, we have about 200 more feet to go in Doylestown. We're at the intersection of Edison-Furlong Road and Turkey Lane. We started on Rogers Road, came down 263, made the right at the Rita's, and now we are passing the post office and about to pass the torch along to Buckingham Township. They have about 5,000 feet of pipe to install. They have more customers than we do, so it's, the project is on point. Grant looks like it's gonna be coming with no problem, so.
That was quick.
Construction's going well, it is. And thanks for everybody, patients and the police, we've had some flagging out there, penned-out required flagging, it's a busy road.
Yep.
So, thanks to everybody's patience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Well, I was there today, I didn't even notice anything happening.
Did you, did you wear your, through the flagging?
63, I went right to Getty, I didn't notice anybody out there annoying me. It was really good.
Good, yeah, we're fortunate.
Nobody stopped me.
We have a good contractor.
Yeah, excellent. All right.
Need a motion to approve.
We need a motion to approve.
I think you had a second already.
Call in the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Done our public hearings. Any unfinished business? New business? The preservation of Burke Farm Preliminary Subdivision, preserve at Burke Farm Subdivision, review extension, so they're wanting an extension.
They want an extension for their land development plan that is in review.
You have to go back to the zoning hearing board, so.
It's a little bit of delay.
We don't need to do anything with that.
Yeah, you have to accept the extension.
Do we need a motion? Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the extension. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Disposition of township property, we want to get rid of some stuff. Call our backhoe generator.
Yes, we have three items that are listed from...
All right, is a motion to dispose of the properties indicated on the memorandum of date of 4/25/18?
We're auctioning, auctioning, second.
First and a second? That was Mr. Snyder, and then second by Ms. Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bills list. Is there, everyone had a chance to look at the bills list that was sent electronically? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
Move to proof.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next meeting on this board is Tuesday, June 5th, at 7:00. We do like the early meetings, so, okay. And then, we're gonna be closed May 15th for primary election day, and Monday, May 28th for Memorial Day. And the garden, Native Garden is this weekend, I noticed it.
Sunday?
Sunday, 3 to 5, wear your hat, it's gonna be wonderful. Probably gonna be beautiful, too. I think it's gonna get a little cooler, it's gonna be 90 until like this weekend. And then, Budget Work Session is Tuesday, excuse me, is June 19th at 3:00. Everyone's welcome to attend. Touch a Truck is Saturday, this Saturday, 10 to 1, it's free. Home Run Derby is also free, May 17th at Church Baseball Fields, but you have to pre-register, it starts at 4:30 to check in, and the Derby runs from 5 to 7. Thompson Performing Arts Series begins on May 18th with Finding Dory, lovely little movie for everybody, even people my age. It's free, and it's gonna be held at the Covenant Bank Amphitheater, as will all the Thompson Performing Arts Series. Doylestown Township Golf Fountain is June 4th, I think Keith signed up already, and he's gonna bring the rest of his crew. June 14th, June 4th at Dulston Country Club, Create a New Flag Competition is extended to June 1st. Guidelines can be found on the township's website. Everybody, thank you very much. Where you are adjourned.